All right, it is 9:30 a.m., December the 9th, Monday morning. We'll bring the record session of Central County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show Larry Holsey, Dwayne Johnson, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Wade Bush are all present. Would you please join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag, and to the legitimacy of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated, or you may remain standing. But I would be sad for the court, please.
Dear Father, we thank you for the stand that you give us. Father, we pray for wisdom here on court, that we make the right decisions. And Father, we pray that you watch over us and guidance. And we pray that, and we pray that, Father, and to have a good result in the Christmas. Father, also pray for the President, that he make the right decisions, and do his best.
Thank you, Larry. All right, item number three, approve previous minutes of previous Commissioners Court meetings.
Yeah, we have three of them, uh, November the 12th, June 15th, and March 1st.
I have a motion by Larry to approve the minutes of previous court meetings. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Item number four, presentation by Ann Carver. I don't see any here yet. I don't see Kelly here, so we'll come back to that one. I figured they were pretty close. All right, item number six, discuss take action on preliminary plat survey for lot 14R in Oakview Ranch. And I wonder if you, Dwayne, that look correct you, yes, sir? It's just combined, and they bought two lots there, and they want to combine lot 14, lot 16. I don't see a problem with anything. Any questions, no comments, this is preliminary, correct? Yes, sir. Any questions, any Commissioners? All right, do I have a motion to move forward to approve that preliminary? I'll make that motion. I have a motion by Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is that Wade? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. You didn't have to see Ann up there in hallway where it is.
No, she wasn't.
Yeah, we'll come back to her. All right, item number seven, discuss take action, advertise for RFPs and local realtor brokers. Our deal with Bill runs out at Flexy River, December 31st, so if we can advertise today and receive them back in January, I didn't bring that meeting date with me.
I thought that the agreement also allowed for renewal if both parties were agreeable. Are you just not wanting to do that?
No, he asked if we would do, Bill asked if we'd just go ahead and advertise, and he just wants to make sure that everybody in Central County has a fair shake to get at if they want, so I told him I would talk to Andy, and he said that it's very commendable, and we would honor his wishes if the court so desires, and I was in letters.
That is a cost saving, so that we wouldn't have to advertise, and, but certainly it's at the court's discretion what they want to do, and if Bill's object, I mean, pardon me for the voice.
Right, now we're all, everybody's fighting.
You know, it does say, it takes both us and the other party to be in agreement, so if he's not in agreement with that, then.
Right. He just, you know, I'll let her, I'll deliver letters again to Maryland and to Quaid Jay, make sure they're very fully aware like we did last time, and then Bill was the only one that made an offer last time. But anyhow, if we are agreeable to go out for our piece again for local realtor brokers, which will be for a one-year contract, we'll receive them back on the December, and I'm sorry, January Commissioners Court meeting. Do I?
I think that's the 13th.
Do I have a motion to do that?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. And, uh, let's see, here's the 13th. We'll receive those back on January the 13th, 8:30 that morning. Let's see if we can get. Is she? All right, we'll come back to number eight, because Kelly's on her way. She's representing number eight, so we'll discuss number nine, discuss take action to advertise for RFPs for golf carts at the golf course.
Yes, sir, the last time we did this was in 2014, and I understand that we want to look at, you know, the possibility of doing this again, so, because it's over $50,000 on this, we need to do an RFP and get those proposals in, so it just depends if y'all want to tackle this on the 13th, or, you know, that's, that's fine, I mean, I think that that would give enough time for them to get in.
So we want to receive them back on January 13th at 8:30 a.m., and then we can review them during that court?
Yes.
All right, well, do I have a motion to move forward for RFPs on golf carts to be received back in Audrey's office by 8:30 a.m. on January 13th?
Forward.
I have a motion by Wade. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or comments?
The, uh, the R, excuse me, I'm sorry, the RFP, as far as what I've been, uh, been told is that it would also address a trade-in value of the existing fleet?
Yes.
We would be doing that with all potential bidders?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Are you good with all that, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? That's by far zero against. Kelly, let's go back to number eight, if you want to make a presentation, discuss take action, advertise for RFPs for caterers dealing with Central County. You'll still go, sort of go into the history there, what we're talking about. Might want to make sure the red button's on, blow up the microphone.
Okay, on the, uh, RFP for catering, uh, in several other cities I work for or counties, in order to bring in more customers and stuff, it'll help us to have a catering list, an approved county catering list, so that if someone comes in for a wedding or a reception, and they want Mexican food for it, we will have an approved Mexican food provider, and that way they can choose a restaurant from our catering list. The RFP is to find out who's interested in it, you know, what they will offer, so they'll send us a list of what they're interested in. It'd be giving a percentage to the county for being on that list, because that would be, um, they would be the ones that they would have to use in any county facility for rental, and, uh, so it's best to do the RFP to let everybody know. Judge Chambers and I talked, I'll take this to some of the restaurants out there and deliver it, just because some of them don't follow Facebook, or newspaper, or however else it goes out, so I make sure they all have it, and kind of, I can kind of explain it all to them.
Make sure there's left out.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And this would be for what you do at the golf course, what you do at the expo?
At the expo, or we have something at the park.
Or whatever, whoever wants to cater, then.
Well, the expo has Mary there, and she does have an agreement for it, but it's not for the parking lot or the banquet side, if I understand right.
The sushi areas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So, we looked into that to make sure we weren't counting, but, yeah, so this way we would have more of a variety. If you bring in weddings, you know, we'll have like a wedding cake provider, you know, and that, I mean, there'll be some extenuating circumstances and stuff, but, uh, just to be able to give them a packet that says, here's our catering personnel, here's our cake decorating, you know, special cakes, that type of stuff. Just trying to wrap things up a little.
Do you want them to come back to you at 8:30 on January 13th before it's in the court? Do you want them to go to Kelly? How do you want them, how do you want them to be received?
I'm, with these, I'm totally fine with going to Kelly.
She can receive them on the coordinate and bring them to you, and if you can present to the court on that morning.
Absolutely.
January 13th. Are you good with that, Kelly?
I'm good with that.
All right, in light of all that, do I have a motion to move forward for the advertising for RFPs or caterers dealing with Central County? Make that motion. I have a motion by Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I'll take Larry's second today. Have a second by Larry.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions or discussions with Kelly at all? Or Brian, or Susie, or?
So we might get, some families might even want to do that for the senior citizens center.
Exactly.
That's true.
Okay, we work at the senior citizens center, or any county facility, and I believe the large mill is also going to use that same later. I'm just trying to keep it organized in the county. We are small enough to have one county approved catering list, as long as we provide variety on the types of food. So it's almost like, you know, we may have some people that kind of put in a RFP that aren't necessarily in the county, but it may be a type of food that we don't have here in the county to offer, so we're going to try and keep it all countywide.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Thank you, Kelly. Do you know if Ann's going to come this morning?
Just text her, I can talk about it.
Okay. Well, we'll go on, and she comes in, and we'll go back to four and five. I will go to you.
Hey Judge, can I ask a quick question?
You bet.
Uh, so before we get down there, do y'all have a list of the salvage inventory? Because I don't have it.
I don't. It was.
I know it was at the chair.
When we get down to, it was, there's a bunch of stuff up there that's completely destroyed that's not, that needs to be gone through, some of it just needs to be gone away.
She was preparing a list, but, you know, shifting new people around, so she didn't get to, so, yeah.
I thought we were going to go through it.
Probably need to take all the ID tags off.
I think she had John do some of that last week. He was coming in with tags, and she was compiling a list, so we made the late until we hear back, but, yeah, but either way.
All right, item number 10, discuss take action on improvements at the expo center. I believe this is what we're currently discussing at the banquet halls, is it correct? The ceiling, the walls, the paint, insulation. Anyhow, I'll let you run with it. Uh, we just, we need to revisit that banquet room down there, as, uh, we got opportunity to use it, uh, there's a lot of interest in it, but it's deteriorated over the last 20-something years, water damage in the ceiling tiles, uh, it's got a pretty rough industrial look down there, the floor tiles are coming up, so we kind of looked at it, and we break it down into about three sections and rework it, and kind of use the same look we have out at the golf course that we did at the pavilion, you know, AKA the rooster out there. We pull all that ceiling tile down, spray foam the top ceiling, help us with the insulation, you know, the art factor and stuff, clean that all up, spray it black, hang lights, and make it, you know, look more modern, more usable, more attractive, and more efficient. Uh, you know, our eye there is to start bringing, trying to bring in some business conferences during the week, but we're going to have to change the way it looks. Very, it doesn't look very interesting to pretty much anyone that goes in there right now, it's just very presentable, it's in bad shape. So as we move forward, we talk about to like use it as we get the bids and contracts, use money out of contingency, and then once we get the money coming in, maybe not reimburse this year, but we reimburse as we can, as everything. Yes, sir. And do as much work as we can in-house. It's what we, you know, it's what we can do. We've got our maintenance department where it's a more proactive type maintenance department, it's not only just replacing stuff, but we've got a good crew of guys together that can actually do stuff, so we can accomplish a lot by ourselves. Do you want to put a cap on it as you move forward, the motion like up to a certain amount from now to contingency, so we cap it? Yeah, I, you know, I, I like to ask for us to put up, you know, take $50,000 out of contingency to do the improvements? Yes, sir. Okay. Not to exceed?
Not to exceed. Right, because that's a pretty important number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that way we can stay away from having to do the full blown.
Right. We don't get anywhere near that when we get all everything in that y'all want to do.
And obviously, the more stuff we do in-house, I mean, that's, that's not subject to any type of competitive at all.
You know, we've already got that movie premiere coming near, I think February the 14th, uh, there's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of people coming into town, and so, you know, we're trying to get some of that cleaned up now before February 14th. Do you add to all this, can we run out of time?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, you want to try to word that into motions, Kelly can write down? I'd like to make the motion to take 50,000, a maximum of 50,000, I like to ease for, ease for improvements. Improvements at the expo banquet hall. I have a motion by Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Wade. Any further questions or discussion?
So what that's going to look like, gentlemen, since that's a separate fund, on the next meeting, I'm going to do a budget transfer to increase the subsidy to the expo by 50 and reduce contingency by 50, so that you'll see, that's how, that's how we'll push it down to the expo to do that, so we capture those costs.
But in no way Frank can have any.
It's not part of his operating. It's going to be reserved for that, but I mean, that's how I got to get the money from the general fund down to the enterprise fund.
So how's that work, say they spend 35,000, can 15 of that go back into contingency or is the other part?
I'm only going to transfer that as he spends it.
Okay, so we can say they're drawn interest until it needs to be moved out of there? It'd just be approved to move that?
It's just going to be an accounting entry.
Right.
So that we can.
So it's just in and out?
Right, but it's going to sit there, and then as he, as he, just kind of like we did with the, uh, the golf course, that's what I did by certain expenses that are of those renovations.
Okay.
We'll pay it out of that.
That's the main thing, I just want taxpayer subsidy kind of going down the tax pool for future, if it's preferable on the future.
Absolutely. No, sir, I understand that.
All right, well, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Item number 11, did we hear anything back from Sarah or Dana yet?
No, sir, so, uh, it's, it's fine for us to put in less scheduled visits, but I mean, that's, that's certainly fine.
Discuss take action to declare surplus slash salvage inventory to be disposed of, and I believe most of this is at the maintenance barn, correct?
Everything that, that is not being used by department is transferred down to the maintenance barn area. As a, as a government, obviously, we have two different ways of disposing of it, well, three, we can trade it in like we're going to do the golf course, we can mark it for auction if it does have any type of residual value, uh, but if it has no residual value, I mean, it's broken, it's busted, it's, you know, roached out, whatever you want to call it, we can declare it just salvage and throw away. I mean, we don't, you know, because it costs to have it auctioned, it costs, you know, to dispose of it, and, you know, to go through all that and not get a bid, you know, it's costly, so, so, I mean, if there's a chair that's broken, a table that's broken, you know, those type of things, an adding machine that is, you know, blown up or whatever, those things can be determined as salvage and declared as salvage, and we just toss them.
Can we use that more as we did, just like that chair he picked up Friday? You know, it's broke down, it's not worth anything.
I would recommend it by sitting.
Yeah, because we're not using that, that choice now, it's just automatically picked up, taken up to the maintenance barn, and we've got stacks of stuff that's just, we need, we need to evaluate, reevaluate stuff before it even goes up there.
I had, I visited with him, and, you know, and told him that if he knows it's salvaged from the get-go, to go ahead, pull the tag from it, market, communicate that to Sarah, unfortunately, it still has to come down here. It does take action for you guys to, uh, okay, can, can I get five? Oh, there you go. Thank you. This is what he did this week, so, I mean, that's, we want to just have this declared and stuff, but yes, sir, even though we know from the get-go that this stuff is trash, we still need it to come down again in the minutes that we did it. And, so.
I see 86, that's been around a while.
You know, we don't, we don't spend money willy-dilly on some things, I'll tell you that, that's true.
92 and 03 is the newest thing on here.
Yeah, that office chair was mine, that one there, it was purchased in 2003. Yeah, I laid it up against the wall so it wouldn't throw, he, he could make a good event at the expo center.
Fucking chair.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, now that we have this list, and.
So we can declare these things as surplus, and John can haul these to the transfer station today.
All right, the list in front of you, if I have a motion to declare this list salvage, trash, and to be disposed of. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth to salvage and trash the list that's been provided to us. Do I have a second? I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Item number 12, back to Brian, approved budget transfers.
Uh, those were emailed to you, um, this part of the year, we're still staying all within the departments, uh, the major, uh, the major one this time was we paid our workers' comp policy. You know, we don't know what those rates are going to be until we get the bill, we estimate, and the one we really flunked up on, and I'll take, I'll take the, uh, the blame for this is because we added so many employees in the fire department, and I didn't take that into account, so, and I was, that's a high risk. Uh, so the fire department was about 11,000 under, but I took money from within their department still, but I, I can't blame Mark or anybody else for that, that was me, I didn't, I didn't. We were, we were changing people and putting more people in, and I just failed to, to recognize that.
Yeah, and this is the payment for next year, 2020, so, then we'll.
Workers' comp goes on a calendar year bill, so it's one of these things, it's, yeah, it starts January 1, and, you know, and it's an estimated premium, and then they'll come back and bill us for our actuals, so.
In January, we'll balance up for 2019, and we could possibly get money back then, but who knows?
And it does go back into those departments as it comes back.
Yeah, it's based on salaries.
Mark will be looking for it.
I'm sure.
One of the interesting things about workers' comp is that we, we, we decided a couple years ago to cover the volunteers, and, but we saved the money in our insurance premium where we had a similar policy, so it was a wash, but it's, it's good to know that we're taking care of our volunteers as well if they get injured.
Well, do I have a motion to approve the budget transfer?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Wade. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or discussion for Susie or Brian? All in favor of said motion? By far zero against. Item number 13, approve paying the remainder of our county bills.
You should receive two emails on that. The grand total is 382,670.16. The unusual numbers, as I told you on the email that I sent to you, I'm transferring 33,005 to the expo center. Uh, the previously mentioned workers' comp premium, that's $66,000 that we're paying this time out, um, and then, um, we had a couple of injured attorneys that were quite costly for a case, um, so that was about 11,000 that we're paying out.
Have a case going on up there right now?
I, I didn't want to know, you know, that 11,000 was a case that just went through jury selection, and it took a plea, so this one's going all the way to verdict, so I don't know what this one's going to be, but, um, and that's, you know, when they talk about the unfunded mandates, that's, that's your, that's our biggest.
Huge.
Right there, is they, they declare, we have to provide counsel, and we have to pay it.
Well, do I have a motion to pay the remainder of our county bills?
I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Item number 15, receive approved monthly reports from all other county departments. I have a motion by Larry to approve the monthly county reports from other county departments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or discussion about the report?
No, actually, this was about Ann. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. All in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. Oh, I'm sorry, Susie, I left you out of there. I'll go back and take care of that. Item number 14, approve the county treasury report, which y'all saw that. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? The 23 on the bathroom, did that get moved over?
It was actually paid, it was actually paid out of their insurance money, so it didn't affect the golf course at all.
What, the, the other 23,000?
It's being moved, yes, sir.
Okay.
Into their tax pool.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the treasurer's report? That's by far zero against. Item number 16, discuss take action on golf course employee pay. I've got a copy of that here. The judge could not be here today, so it was out of town. All right, you want me to just read in the record what he had to say? Judge, due to the changes in the food and beverage operation at the golf course, I'm asked to raise Pam's stallings from 8.50 per hour to $10.00 per hour. Pam was integral part of the operation, especially with at front of the house, she has more managerial duties than was foreseen before we opened the rooster. Even though she is now full-time, we do not pay her insurance, so he's asking to make 50 to 10, and I don't know if y'all have anything to say or present, since he's not here. She's, she's definitely a, you know, she's a manager of the rooster, as we call it, and she's willing to work the money.
And you're in a lot of business down there, so.
Well, do I have any motion to move forward to raising her from 8.50 to $10.00 per hour?
Will be effective date as well.
I'll make that motion. Susie, what's a good effective date? Sorry, Wade, I don't read the rooster, just the next payday.
Yeah, we are, that would be, um, time sheets come in on January 22nd, but start January 1st, so can we do it on January 1st?
January 1st?
That'll be her next paycheck.
1-1 of 2020?
Worked out pretty good, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah. All right, Wade, on your motion, are you good with making it effective 1-1 of 2020?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion by Wade. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or discussion for Susie or Brian, or? Everything's good? All right, all in favor of said motion? That's by far zero against. All right, before we retire into executive session, let's go back to item number four, there's going to be a presentation by Ann Carver.
She is on her way.
All right.
Um, she needs probably about another five minutes to be here, so if you want to do that after executive session.
I could do that, we could come back to that, and she can make her presentation, and then, all right, so we'll retire into executive session right at 10 a.m., and Susie, if you and Brian will stick around with us. And Susie, if you and Brian will stick around with us.
Is it okay? If you stay in court?
There's no action to be taken at this time on executive session, so let's go back to item number four. Ann, are you ready? We'll take your presentation. And will you make sure the blue-red symbol is on below the microphone, please?
Please push it.
If it's on, it's good. If it's not on, push it and see what happens. There you go. All right, Ann, fire away.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Ann Carver. Most of you already know me. I have the privilege of being in charge of the Bernard's Mill and president of the Somerville History Foundation. But what I'm here for today is the Old County Jail. As many of you know, it was built in 1934. It's part of the WPA program, if you're not familiar with that, but most of us are of the age that we would remember what that was. It brought us out of the Great Depression was the theory behind it. Somerville County had several buildings that were built under the WPA program and the Old County Jail being one of them. The county has done some restoration work on the building in the past, but it continues to be locked and not open to the public and there appears to be some water damage maybe in the upper levels of it. I've talked to Mr. Zimmerman, who is an engineer who has done work for the Bernard's Mill. He actually donated his time to come out and look at the building. He will come out and look at the building and see if it's structurally sound for us to maybe look and take an opportunity to finish restoration and maybe open the lower floors for the public to go in and see it. What I'm here today to ask you is that will you give me permission to evaluate and explore the opportunity to restore the Old County Jail? That this jail was built in 1934 and it houses the original cells from the original jail that was built in the 1800s.
And allow this to be through like grants that you've secured on down there?
I will not charge anything for my time. I'm doing it strictly for the love of preservation and for the county and what I feel for Somerville and the fact that I think it needs to be opened and looked into. There will not be any charge from me. Mr. Zimmerman will not charge anything. We will apply for grants to get it done. Most of what it looks like, just from a cosmetic standing point, is that it just needs some paint put on it, some photographs put up about on the first floor, about how it was used and lived in. Because it's been restored and well-taken care of in the past. We just need to make sure it's feasible to have public in and out of the first floor.
And give you permission to move forward on the grants and things like that, does not mean, not expended any money from the county at this time? If there's ever been expended money to be expended, it'd come back and we'd discuss that at that time.
If there's any money to be expended by the county, I will come back and ask for it. But I'm so sure through the Texas Historical Preservation, because there is money for the courthouses and for the jails and for buildings like that, to get a grant for it. And as you very well know, I've written several grants for the Bernard's Mill and that's how we got a lot done down there, just through grant work, through private donations and all.
So if they decided to give you permission to move forward, you just bring the engineer in, let him do the survey, he's offered to do it for free, then you start the application process for a grant, see how that would go and things like that? And do you come back and like, hey, we just not deal with you?
And I'm going to have a roofer come look at the roof.
Okay, all right.
There's no expense.
Well, do we have any questions for Ann before we move to item number five?
Whatever happens is court, is in control of what happens takes place.
Yeah, you have full control. I'm just asking for permission before I move any further and put any more time into it and look into it. I'm asking for permission from the county to actually evaluate and look at it.
So you don't waste a whole lot of time? The county says, no, we don't want to be involved at all.
That's right.
I understand. Anything else? Questions? Tell me if it's issued.
Some of the graffiti, those cells is historical.
It is?
Some of the graffiti is. We're trying to figure out how the spray paint got up there. You have an answer for that?
I wasn't prepared.
But we're not getting to ch, all we're doing right now is to look at it, to explore it, to see. I'll be glad to let you spend a night in a cell. My dad tells the stories of, of when, when that jail was active. He was down here working at that time, so he tells the stories of it. So there's a lot of stories to be told and we're just looking at trying to preserve it. Because as you all know, several buildings were WIP in this area. And it's my understanding that two of the dams that were built by the WA, WPA have already been demolished. So if you don't look it from at that point, if you need to look at it, it's also a part of history when we were coming out of the depression and trying to put America back to work, that's kind of what we're doing today.
Four dams.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I believe Ms. Marguerite Dempsey was our first dispatcher over there. She had one.
Who was your secretary? Um, Bill Carruth. He was the deputy sheriff down here in the late 70s, the early 80s, as he talks about. Did you spend the night in that jail for doing the circles of...
I didn't say anything.
You went around the square a few times, he says.
Many, many times.
Yeah, you were ragracing around the square a few times, like in the grass or on the pavement.
We might better move on, there's too much on me right now. All right, Ann, do you have anything else to say?
No, I just want the opportunity to look at it and try to open it up. The first floor, I'm not sure we can open the second floor because of the nearest stairwell and all of that, but we can, should we, with I, there are ways to have the first, the second floor, the gentleman, all is projected downstairs where people actually can see it and, and all. Just asking for it to explore.
Thank you, Ann. We'll move on to item number five, discuss take action on presentation by Ann Carver. We so desire to let her move forward with the engineering survey and the grant survey,